Again with Pledge of Allegiance. I see Joe's got the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation
under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call please.
President Van Portfleet.
Here.
President Pearl Tim Matheson.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Hobbs.
Here.
Councilmember Narsh.
Here.
Councilmember Ranville. Councilmember Rutt.
Here.
We have a quorum and Councilmember Ranville is still trying to get into the meeting.
Thank you.
They're working on it.
We have a presentation this evening. Chief Rossman is going to introduce a new officer, Officer Kirk, to us.
Uh, yes, am I also there, Council President? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, welcome, um, council members. Um, right behind me here is Officer Brian Kirk. Uh, Brian Kirk was an MSU graduate from nineteen ninety-two with a BA in criminal justice. So any Wolverine fans out there, don't hold that against him. Um, in March of nineteen ninety-three, he was selected, he was actually went through our reserve officer program. And then in nineteen ninety-five, he started as a part-time officer with the Lake Orion Police Department. Um, in nineteen ninety-six, he moved on, uh, and started full-time with the Ferndale, city of Ferndale Police Department. And then, uh, he left there and started working with Shelby Township Police Department full-time in, uh, March of two thousand and three. Uh, he then left there and ended up coming back home, uh, in twenty fifteen and was one of our part-time officers. Uh, he went through the examination process and ended up with the highest scores and through the interviews, and I would like to, uh, present the council, Officer Brian Kirk, who's standing right behind me. And I believe we're going to swear him in as a Lake Orion full-time officer.
All right. Okay, good. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Full-time police officer.
Full-time police officer.
In and for the village of Lake Orion.
In and for the village of Lake Orion.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Again. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you, Officer Kirk. We'll look forward to meeting you and real, as a real opportunity, I know Councilmember Narsh has something he'd like to say.
Welcome back full-time, Brian. Good to have you back on the team.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We've got a lot on our plate. We look forward to the assistance. Is that it, Chief Rossman?
Yes.
Uh, yes, it is. Moving on, call to the public.
President Van Portfleet, I have no emails or phone calls or submitted comments.
Thank you. Item six consent agenda, it's been requested that items one and two get pulled off and made regular agenda items. I entertain a motion for the remaining three.
I'll move.
Support.
We have three items on the consent agenda, approval of the village council regular meeting minutes from May twenty-sixth. Item two, Board of Zoning Appeals, regular meeting draft minutes, May seven. And item three, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, regular meeting minutes, May fourteenth. We have a motion for support. Roll call please.
Narsh.
Yes.
Um, Van Portfleet?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Yes.
Oh, John, okay.
Thank you. Item seven is approval of the agenda. And although in item B, our other items, number one would be car cruise and number two would be fireworks. And then the remainder following in order, I would like to ask that we have other items B become A and have our financial matters follow. We've got some participants this evening and we can get right to our agenda items. So I'd ask for that amendment and the motion. Mr. Matheson.
I'll, uh, I'll move to approve the agenda as amended. Or.
supported by.
Jerry.
My Narsh. Roll call.
Ranville? You're out, you're muted, Joe, John. Unmute. Okay, we'll give them a yes. Rutt?
Yes.
There you go.
Yes. Portfleet?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Narsh?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. And then we'll move right to the agenda. The very first agenda item is the car cruise. Mr. Young?
Yes, council, before you this evening, we have an application for a car cruise to celebrate the Lake Orion High School graduating class of two thousand and twenty. Uh, the event request is for Saturday, January, uh, June twenty-eighth, starting eleven AM. Kristen Berry is here with us this evening. She's made the application and can comment on, um, the event itself. Kristen?
Hi, Joe. Um, so a few friends and I got together and, you know, really felt that we needed to do something fun and special for the senior class since they really aren't getting anything, you know, maybe till end of July into August. So hence the cruise and thought it would be appropriate just with, you know, our given situation. So, um, that and then also it would be great to bring some people downtown and to, um, you know, get the, get some awareness of the businesses that are open. So they've been really enthusiastic about that. So just thought it was a great idea.
Regarding the route, it's, they're gonna start at Plant Sims and go down Florence to Flint and then Flint to South Broadway.
Right. So I, so I just talked to Harold tonight and I'm deferring to him, but we're gonna kind of keep it. We were gonna go down Front Street, but we're gonna go straight down Broadway. And then if people want to come back into town, they can loop around.
Right. How many cars do you expect to participate? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea, but, you know, I mean, there's five hundred kids-ish. So I don't know, maybe a couple hundred, maybe. It's so hard to say, but at least the kids I've talked to so far, everyone's very, you know, they're, they're really into it. So we'll not exactly sure on the participation yet, but hopefully there's a good turnout.
Anybody care to make a motion?
Uh, council, council president, uh, Van Portfleet, Chief Rossman, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe Joe, our, our village manager got the date wrong. It's supposed to be Saturday, I believe, June twenty-seventh. Is that correct, Kristen?
Right.
Oh, twenty-seventh, sorry.
Yeah, at eleven AM.
Thank you, sir.
I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the application for a car cruise to celebrate the Lake Orion High School graduating class of two thousand and twenty on Saturday, June twenty-seventh, starting at eleven AM as presented.
Support. Supported by Madison. You know, uh, Kristen, thank you very much. It's, it's great that you took the initiative to do this. It, uh, it's gonna be a great time, I'm sure. It'll, it'll be well-received and hopefully it'll be, uh, something that'll be talked about, you know, as part of their cherished memories. So thank you. Roll call please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Ranville?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Van Portfleet?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narsh?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. Again, great program. Moving on to the fireworks, Mr. Young, sir?
Yes, council.
Asshole.
Hello.
Yes, council, before you have a request to have fireworks to slay on July fourth, Saturday, July fourth, I think I got the right date on that one. Uh, this is through the Lake Orion Fireworks Association and President Dave Welch is here. He previously submitted a letter, uh, uh, I don't know if this, those clerk was gonna read, end of the record.
Read it into the record, I'm sorry. Okay.
If you would, thanks.
Uh, Joseph Young, Village of Lake Orion council members. Lake Orion Fireworks Association is sponsoring the two thousand and twenty-fourth of July fireworks show to be launched from a barge on the east side of the lake. Unfortunately, there isn't anyone that hasn't been affected by the pandemic. But as our state opens back up, people are looking to return to a new normal. We are looking for cooperation from the members of the community to ensure so, social distancing during the show. With the help from Greg Rogers, who organized the GoFundMe campaign. It's community rally together to theater, go and raise enough funds to. Lake Orion, um, Fireworks Association President David Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Not a problem.
And thank you for taking on the endeavor. Is there anything that you'd like to say at this time, sir?
Well, I'm sitting with, uh, some members of the crew, actually, uh, uh, Greg Rogers had started the GoFundMe page, if you have any questions for him. Bob Kreske, which is Vice President of the Fireworks Association. And Mr. Chris Garnett, he's kind of been helping us through the pros and cons of going through since actually everything got canceled and he gave us some assistance through that. So I, I just want to let you aware that they're in the presence of tonight's meeting.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for joining us and, uh, being available. So let's open it up, uh, for, uh, possible motion and then we'll go into discussion.
Hey.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number two thousand and twenty dash all two two approving the application for a public display of fireworks from floating platforms secured in the waters of Lake Orion with conditions to be held on Saturday, July fourth, two thousand and twenty, with Sunday the fifth as the rain date beginning at dusk approximately ten PM on either day submitted by Drew Aspen Shade on behalf of the Lake Orion Fireworks Association Loa.
Or.
We have a motion and support. Open it up for discussion. Mr. Ranville, sir?
Uh, yes, uh, I'm all in favor of fireworks. I've been involved with fireworks for forty years over, over my lifetime. But, uh, as of right now, do we have any concerns on the crowd size we're gonna draw? Social distancing, the road construction that we have going on? Uh, uh, the Fireworks Association canceled it. And so from what I heard, a lot of our officers have, uh, done, um, scheduled their vacation time for other places. So security-wise, uh, uh, restroom facilities, there's, it can go on and on. There's no way you can have social distancing and, and with that large of a crowd. And what are the orders from the governor at this time? Can we open it up and have fifty, sixty thousand people downtown? That's my question.
I know I, uh, got a message from Senator Bear's office because I had asked if she could assist us with some additional information and considerations. I did make attempts to try to reach Sean Egan from the governor's office today. Because I felt that these questions would be asked. And, um, the only thing I do know from Bear's office is the governor is saying that Phase Five should be coming in within the next couple of weeks. Phase Five would be opening up to groups of two hundred and fifty people or less in the Phase Five, uh, uh, regulations. Um, there will be parks that are gonna be opened up. There's gonna be, uh, theaters and, uh, other venues that normally are group settings for a lot of people. So that's one thing I could find out from the governor's office slash or center's office. I did contact Oakland County Commissioners, Board of Commission over there. Got an opinion that, uh, they thought it was good and they didn't know of any prohibiting factors to reel it back in. And, um, that's as far as I got with my groundwork. Mr. Hobbs?
I was just wondering how many, uh, area fireworks have been canceled this year around, around us? And if they have been, that'll make our fireworks one of the most attended ones. And I just wondered what the safety issues were with that.
I think, I think the question would be, uh, who, who else is shooting off fireworks? And I asked our village manager, Mr. Young, that. And Mr. Young, who is it?
The only one I know is the night before at Independence Township, I believe.
White Lake?
White Lake, I'm sorry, White Lake, the night before. We're not aware in any of the area for Saturdays, July fourth. That we're aware of. Jerry might have something.
Mr. Narsh?
Uh, not on that. Um, I was just gonna kind of render an opinion. Um, I, I deferred to Chief Rossman as to, uh, the staff considerations. But in lieu of that, um, just a couple of thoughts. I, I think, uh, Loa is putting it on and, um, it's, it, it's more kind of a lake event. I think this year it just seems to be more out on the water. Uh, if, uh, I had a couple of recommendations earlier, I talked to the manager. Is the reason we picked the shoot location where it is presently is because the majority of the show is to be witnessed by people on M twenty-four. Um, if we move the barge in a northwesterly, uh, position, it would actually be more visible by everyone on the lake uh, and not as visible along M twenty-four, which is the general public as opposed to the people that actually paid for the show. Um, yeah, not that we don't want the general public to see it, but it's gonna discourage people uh, from trying to meet in those public areas and jam-pack in those areas. I, I don't know, are we planning on closing Greens Park in the public area next to Autozone? Are we? So.
I was recommending we would.
Okay. I mean, I, I would recommend that as well, um, because Greens Park can hold up to fifteen hundred people. We've had eleven, twelve hundred the last couple of years at firework shows. Um, there'd be no way to enforce the social distancing there. Uh, and there'd be no way to limit it. Um, I mean, my opinion, it would be to close that and let this show be kind of for the folks that paid for it and want to put it on, the Orion folks. Um, I, I think it would then be, the only issues would be private property holders along M twenty-four. But the show won't be as visible. It'll be more visible to the majority of people on the lake. Um, that, uh, it's my understanding of the people that paid for it. Is that right, Dave? Okay. The people in the community. So I, I think it's more a community show that way. And I think it, you know, it's an idea to celebrate, uh, our independence and celebrate the fourth and celebrate coming out of COVID. But at the same time, if we close our public property and not let folks on there, I, I think in a way, the road construction helps us. Um, it's gonna discourage folks from coming down M twenty-four, trying to find a spot to watch these things. So, um, I, I think for the intent that Dave and Loa did, uh, and I think the size of the show and if, if we take a look at maybe at that barge location, I know Drew Aspen Shade's a great guy and, and he gets it. Um, uh, so I, I throw those comments out that, uh, I, I, I think it can be done. And again, I defer to Chief Rossman on his, uh, ability to staff it. But I think it's gonna be a lot less people in a way. It'll be more people at homes in the lake.
Ms. Rutt?
Yeah, quick comment, um, or thought as you're talking about like it being more people on the lake. Um, since the GoFundMe was a community thing, I'm assuming there's quite still other people in the village um, that's, that are on the lake, even town, non-lake owners that have donated to see the fireworks because it's something that they've gone to every year. So to move it, uh, in a place where it would be prohibitive for non-lake owners to see, I feel like would, would be a little bit hard for those who had given to the GoFundMe that don't live on a lake and don't have property on the lake.
Good point, Teresa. I, my, my only, my thought on that was to, uh, not encourage massive amounts of public coming from out of town. Was my only thought process.
Yeah, I get that.
You have, you have a point.
And I think too, like, I don't have a strong opinion on Greens Park. There are ways to limit it, to say the first hundred people to buy a ticket get to come into Greens Park. Um, first hundred people, we can take chalk paints, like, here are a hundred different circles. You have to pick a circle, stay in it. Um, if we wanted to do something like that, you know, I think that could be done.
Keep in mind that we won't have a Jubilee.
Right.
Won't have a beer tent. So the efforts to police and, uh, uh, take care of public safety are reduced, even though there may be some additional attendance. And I'm sorry, I know you're not Mr. Welsh, but whoever you are, certainly hand up.
It is Dave.
Yeah, this is.
Aspen Shade?
No, it's Greg Rogers.
Oh, Mr. Rogers.
Thanks, thanks, guys. I just wanted to, uh, piggyback off Teresa, your, your question on, on kind of the donations and, and from the community. I mean, it's certainly something that, um, I would say ninety-nine percent of those that did donate um, indicated where they were. Um, and, and of those, um, you know, having grown up in, in this community all my life and knowing a lot of the members of the community, I would say, uh, a good eighty percent of those are, um, if not more, are all lake owners, um, from the community. So there was, there was a few that definitely did come in from, um, the downtown area. Um, but I would say, you know, more than eighty percent of the, the contributions came from, uh, from the lake.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Young, sir?
I would like to have, uh, Chief Rossman speak to the staffing and traffic control issues.
Hi, um, council, oh, I'm sorry, you ready? Okay, um, we're, it looks like I'm gonna have sixteen personnel on duty. Um, which I'll be minus ten. Um, so it's doable. Um, I also know that, you know, that the issue with us probably being the only ones in the area. Cause I did some research, it looked like White Lake was the only one they're doing it tonight before. Um, it's out there. Uh, we can't put it all back in the, the bottle. I think it was in the review or something. I believe it was on Facebook. So, um, I think a lot of people are gonna be hungry and thirsty for fireworks. Um, for the, you know, so I, I, again, I don't have a crystal ball, can't tell you, uh, how many we'll have. Um, we, we could have quite a few. Um, or we may not. Um, traffic on twenty-four, I mean, with the construction kind of concerns me because you have one lane in each direction. I know years back, uh, when we had both lanes open, north and south on twenty-four. Um, we had assistance from Oxford Police Department down at Verdic, uh, in Oxford. We had the sheriff's office helping us with Drainer. Um, we had the sheriff's office helping us with Ogana and Clarkson Road Lights. And with four lanes of traffic, you know, two going north, two going south. During the traffic decal, we had approximately forty-five minutes to an hour of gridlock on twenty-four bumper to bumper. So, so now, depending on how many people we get, you know, we could have probably, you know, hour and a half to two hours of gridlock. Just depends on how many people decide to show up for this. So it's just a concern for me. The other concern, um, is we'll probably still have to have, we'll probably still have issues. We got two lanes closed down for the construction, so I can see people hopping there and putting their chairs in the construction zone. Um, but I guess if there's social distancing, um, you know, I think it's a hundred right now, could be, what, two fifty, I think, coming up in a few weeks. Um, the Bellevue Bridge, uh, last year, Sergeant Stanfield, now Lieutenant Stanfield, uh, former Chief Narsh wanted a, a count. Um, and he came up with, he did count the people on the Bellevue Bridge and he had two hundred people, um, just on the bridge to watch the fireworks last year. So, uh, with that all, I mean, that's pretty much the only concern that I've got, is putting them out there for council and just, uh, evaluate. And none of us have a crystal ball. All I can tell you, if we have them, um, we'll do our best to, uh, keep, uh, the public safe.
I, uh, I'm curious about getting some preliminary signage out there that, uh, suggests that we practice social distancing during the fireworks. And Chief Rossman, have you reached out to the Oakland County Sheriff's at all for their assistance?
Yeah, I was wait, well, I was waiting for the decision tonight. Once I get a decision tonight, definitely, um, we're gonna, you know, hold them. I'll contact the marine divisions, see if they can have a boat go out and, uh, I'll talk to Lieutenant Toth. We, we have been in, in, in talks, Lieutenant Toth and I, um, he's aware of it. So I'm sure I'll get a little bit of help there.
All right. Hello, how are you, sir?
Good, I am, I am not, I am not Dave Welch. Not sure what the screen says. Um, yeah, I just wanted to chime in. Um, Joe Young, uh, Chief Rossman, Lieutenant Toth and I met last week. Uh, we did start a preliminary discussion. I agree with Chief Rossman. Um, I've spoken and followed up with Lieutenant Toth since then. Uh, we're from the sheriff's office, willing to assist, um, as they have every year. But, um, understanding of the current, the, the challenges that have been discussed, we're, we're willing to assist in whatever way is needed. Um, so I think it's, you know, if this moves forward, we'll, we'll get together right away and start looking at what that, uh, understand what that looks like. I will tell you, um, we are permitting on Monday night in our board meeting a week from tonight, Indian Wood is doing their private fireworks show. Uh, Independence Township, I spoke with Pat Kittle today. They are doing a fireworks show and they're making it a public fireworks show on July third, Friday, the third. They're shooting them from top, the top of Pine Knob. And the township's actually paying for that, so that'll be a very public show. I would just draw to the council, I think it's, it's a contrast. I mean, uh, we've been, you know, there's a handful of, of folks that pay money every year for the Lake Orion fireworks. It's an amazing tradition. And we ran into challenges, Commissioner Genjel was kind of spearheading that, uh, and I was helping him. You know, we ran into challenges right away with businesses saying, you know, we're cutting back, we can't really donate. And so we just assumed it was over. And then we had good lake people like Mr. Rogers, who's sitting next to me, that took it upon himself. And you could see people are hungry to support something. So what we've said basically last week was, um, yes, there has been discussion about it, but yes, this is the public meeting. But essentially, if this moves forward, it's a private fireworks show funded by private individuals. There's no corporate sponsors, there's no township money, there's no village money. And so we will not be promoting it. We will not be putting a banner across, uh, M twenty-four. We won't be putting banners along the road to promote it. We won't be doing Facebook posts. Uh, we won't be taking ads out in the Lake Orion Review like we do every year to thank our sponsors because it's just individuals that have chipped into the kitty. So, um, we're willing to assist and help, uh, you know, I think that we've seen recently that people take, you know, do the social distancing however they see fit. And, um, you know, some people that are still not ready, they'll, they'll, um, stay home. But some people that want to get out, they'll, they'll get on their boats or, or go to a friend's house on the lake. And I think that's, that's what we're, um, gonna quietly encourage, is not to have masses come from all over. But there will be other public shows around us, including Independence Township the night before. They just haven't approved it yet at their township board meeting. So, um, I agree with everything Chief Narsh said. I think maybe you try to do, close down some of the public areas and we discourage that it's not really a, not the same show as it has been before. It's not dueling. It's a smaller show. Those are all truth, factual things, uh, basically put on by the lake president. So, and, and the township is willing, the sheriff's office is willing to assist and, and, uh, we will continue those conversations. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members? Mr. Hobbs, sir?
Well, not, not to be a negative guy, but, um, this, this is about three weeks away, right?
Yes.
Oh, three, okay. We've been seeing all these protests with, with people so close together and not having distancing. Oh, three, okay. We've been seeing all these protests with with people so close together and not having distancing. They don't know there's there's gonna be this COVID come come uh uptick in these, you know, in the next few few weeks. What if there is this uptick? Would we cancel the show or 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 just go from there?
Well, I think what you're saying, maybe I could try to help you with that, is that if the indicators, because the governor talks about those a lot.
Yeah.
If the indicators were to turn the other way, which I wouldn't expect they will, not in that short period of time, then she would make a call out. She would make a call out to the state again to start to do defensive action.
Um, so we leave it up to uh Lansing then?
Well, there's another portion of this that I wanted to ask Mr. Young and uh perhaps even Loaf, Mr. Welsh could help. But does it require, someone had told me that it may possibly, one of the commissioners, require DNR approval as well?
Not, yeah. That would be done by uh.
Ace Pyro.
Ace Pyro.
Yeah. He he's already.
So all I wanted to say is there is a state agency that's a little bit of a watchdog on this as well. So to me, that provides some protection as to if it's something that needs to be halted or pulled back, then there's a state agency involved with us as well that has a has a, oh, you know, an opportunity in this to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, he gets his license from the state of Michigan. And so if there's any issues that way, it'll be stopped through them, so.
Yep. Mr. Matheson, sir?
Well, I've enjoyed the fireworks in the past for all the years I've been here. Um, I still have concerns that like they've been brought up from everybody that have brought concerns and um, I don't know if I'm completely comfortable with this. And that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'll just.
Yeah, Mr. Ramville, sir?
I'll just reiterate that uh the amount of people that the governor's allowed to uh get uh together at this time is very small. Uh, this crowd, the word gets out. It's it's even though we're gonna have a small show, it's gonna be maybe a different part of the lake. It's gonna draw a crowd. Orion's always put off the best fireworks show, so uh if we're comfortable with uh people standing shoulder to shoulder, go for it. If you're not, uh, if we're gonna be in violation of some government uh governor's orders, then I I would say maybe hold off for a week or two, see what happens.
Mr. Hammond?
But we're getting close. We're we're running out of time. We ran out of time.
I think there's a lot, a lot of good viewpoints on this, but ultimately, this is a private event. Uh, people need to attend responsibly. We've got uh, our chief is in support of it. We've got the the necessary permitting from the DNR in place, it sounds like, pending this this uh council. Um, and personally, I I think people need to be responsible for themselves. If you're not comfortable, stay home. Uh, and and we can't micromanage what these people do. This is a fireworks, it's twenty minutes. How they live their life outside of that, we can't control that. And frankly, I'm tired of the governor telling us what to do. We've had enough of this. Um, if people want to stay home and they're they're concerned about their health, they should stay home. You know, I watch where I go. That's my decision. But if people want to go out and do things like this responsibly, uh, I don't think it's my place to stand in their way, so I'm gonna vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I agree, even like with the march, the march that happened recently is um, people have to take responsibility for what they're gonna tolerate and what they're going to participate in and or not. Anyone else? I'd like Mr. Hobbs.
I'd just say if Harold's comfortable with it, you know, I'll give it a yes both.
Okay, well, you get that opportunity moment, sir. Anybody else?
Does Harold want to say anything else?
Well, uh, council, again, like I said, if um if you approve this, um, we will do everything humanly possible to keep everybody safe. That's what we do on the three years. Again, we never know from year to year, guys and gals. Um, if we don't have a crystal ball, uh, we'll just do the best job we can.
All right. Sir, after that, I'd like to call for a roll call vote, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Narsh?
Yes.
Ramville?
Yes.
Rutt? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Dan Porfleet?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr.
Volcan Kerry seven zero.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Thank you, uh, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Aspen Shade, uh, Chris, everybody involved. And we'll move on to the next agenda item. Let us know what we can do. Uh, we'll have some additional, probably a discussion or two about anything that pops up if it's out of the ordinary. Thank you.
Please do, and I thank you for your appreciation and taking a closer look at this. And we're not gonna push any advertising. We're gonna try to keep it close to the community as possible.
Thank you, sir. Job well done.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
You too. Moving on to item three. Permit fees, chicken permit zoning ordinance, Article thirteen, Section thirteen point three. Mr. Young?
Yes, council, uh, council previously approved uh the ordinance amendment to allow for chickens in the community with certain restrictions, limitations. And we've developed a form uh for your consideration along with fees. We're proposing that the fee be an application fee of twenty-five dollars and then if they meet the requirements, that there be a permit fee of twenty-five dollars. So approval this evening is to um approve the fees that were proposed.
I think there's one council member that has conflict of interest here, so.
Well.
As you guys know, as you guys know, I enjoy raising poultry. Um, what's the goal with the fee, Joe? Is it to deter people from applying and getting a permit? Or is it to cover the cost of the village?
The cost of administration and review and the processing is what the goal is. That's what the fee should represent, cover our cost.
Ms. Rutt?
Um, what are other communities charging for a permit? Because fifty dollars total seems pretty high for to me to do twenty-five application, twenty-five. That seems really.
It's like a lot of money to me as well.
Right. Like, I'd be twenty-five for the whole thing.
Twenty-five.
Fine.
In total, seems, but yeah, fifty, I was like, fifty bucks?
Oh, you buy a lot of eggs for fifty bucks, right?
I didn't pay fifty bucks for my chickens.
I'm wondering, like, do other communities charge fifty, especially if you only, we're only allowing four hens? You know, it's not like, you know, we're allowing them a dozen, a dozen hens, you know, so fifty bucks.
See, uh, I I'm of the opinion, I'm reverse. I think twenty-five dollar application and fifty dollar administration. Because nothing happens down there for under fifty bucks, I'm telling you. You know, twenty-five dollars is a bargain, but that's my opinion. So we'll let the group here set the fee, whatever it may be.
Do you know what other, Joe?
No, I I don't. I'm sorry.
About forty.
Still high.
Hey, Joe, what what are, what other permits do we ask people to take out and get annual uh renewals at for similar costs?
Well, there's of course all the construction permits, the sign permits that range from twenty-five to fifty dollars.
You have to have a permit to have a uh campfire?
No, no, no.
Okay.
What a dog license is ten dollars?
No.
Campfires, campfires are illegal.
So what what is a dog license?
Uh, Susan, do you remember?
No, I don't.
Mine's about twelve bucks for my dog.
For one year?
Yeah, every year.
Like an application fee of ten bucks and then your permit fee of fifteen.
There are solicitors permits. Um, but they're by the day, by the week, and then by um the month, or thirty-five dollars for a month. Plus, you have to pay the fee to do the background checks, and I think there's even an application fee, and they have to put up a bond.
That's a very different thing than raising chickens.
Yeah, you just have to offer a permit that we that we do do, but you know, if if, I'm just saying that that's one of the permits we do that would be similar to this.
It kind of goes back to me to like, it's something I want to do on my property that's now legally allowed, and you're gonna make me spend fifty bucks to do that, so.
Well, it it, you know, part part of the cost is having it reviewed and make sure it complies with the ordinance, which would involve normally our planner, which we're paying.
Well, but we've also got, we've also got uh self-declaration that we understand the part, the uh ordinance and that um, you know, if you had no complaints, I don't know why you'd want to come out. I've invited people out to see what I have and nobody's taken me up on it. So, you know, I don't want somebody out there with a tape measure nickel and dime me when my neighbors don't care, whatever I do. So for me to pay for you to come nickel and dime me seems outrageous on private property. You know, as a libertarian, I resent that.
That's really.
That's, and fifty bucks is fifty bucks. You know, I can afford it. I'm not gonna kid you guys. I'm not poor. But I don't want to spend fifty bucks I don't have to spend.
Councilmember Narsh?
I took you up on it, Ray. You weren't home and the eggs were great.
That's nice.
Um, I I'd like to propose a uh fifteen dollar permit fee and a fifteen dollar um, uh, what's the other, the application fee?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, uh, for the for the group to consider. I I do understand the planner part of it. I understand what Ray is saying and Teresa. I I mean, I think it's a cool idea. I think um all communities are segueing back to that of raising natural foods. And um, but there is some cost to make sure that we don't have to do police enforcement later, or code enforcement later, I should say, uh, as a result of poor planning on the village, so I'd get it. Um, but I I I think a fair split would be uh no more than fifteen dollars for each fee. We don't want to price out uh the very reasons for which Ray is saying we're having these things and uh, uh, and Teresa as well. I I just propose that for the group as an alternative.
I'll second that motion.
Well, one more question. How how often do you have to renew your permit?
Annual.
Oh, is it?
It's annual.
I would propose that we make it uh two-year, a two-year permit instead of one, and I'll go for the fifteen and fifteen.
So would you like to amend the motion or just how how does like?
The motion right now.
Um, I I'll make a motion that it's fifteen dollars for each of the permits with a biennial licensing period.
Eighteen months, eighteen months. Oh, come on.
And and a dozen eggs. A dozen.
Three years, three years.
All right, so I will amend my motion to be biennial. As a chief had uh amended his, for my support. Roll call.
Support. I'm I can't, I'm not gonna support it. I'm conflicted.
I'm staying. You need to stay.
I I I feel you, Ray. I feel you. And I don't even have chickens. My husband doesn't have chickens.
He formed a, lay some eggs before I come over.
You should get some.
I want.
Is that a question?
Mr. Hobbs?
Have you had many requests for people to put up chicken coops in their yard?
One other one.
Yes, he came to council that one. I think I remember that one.
There's there's another person asked for an application.
Okay, not be my next door neighbor.
Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Ramville?
Yes.
Rutt?
Yes.
Dan Porfleet?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Narsh?
Yes.
Volcan Kerry seven zero.
All right, thank you.
I want the council to know I sold my redundant chickens to meet the limit imposed by the ordinance, so. It was a tearful event, but I did it.
I bet. Then how did they taste? You got your money for your fees.
There you go.
Moving on. Item for temporary use regulations due to COVID-nineteen outdoor dining, Mr. Young?
Yes, council, before this evening, we have for your consideration, three resolutions to help with the economic re-emergence from the COVID. Has it affected all of our businesses downtown? Uh, the resolutions are in three categories because there's three different natures we want to make sure people knew about. One is restaurants and bars uh are a different category because they also have, the state of Michigan has a temporary, it says temporary, but permanent outdoor permit that they can apply for for expanding their outdoor seating that runs through October thirty-one. So um that does require a sign-off by the village to use public property. And what that first resolution would address that particular use for outdoor, where they would take up the sidewalk area. Uh, they could do that, and if there's any parking area, they could ask for consideration of that as well, parking lot area. Uh, the plan is that we would move the sidewalk to the first five feet of the parking bay area. So the businesses could expand their sales and services out to the sidewalk area and that the walk pedestrian walkway and those businesses would be the first five feet of the parking line, which would be barricaded inside and noticed sufficiently uh to avoid any problems with the pedestrian, any vehicle traffic coming through. So our proposal, which uh is being coordinated through the Downtown Development Authority, is looking at uh financing, the barricading along with the, looking at businesses perhaps participating. The case of the restaurants and bars, the LCC requires certain requirements, including fencing to go around their area that they'd be serving. Um, that's what this would address as well. Uh, so that's what we have for the bar food and beverages establishments. We also have a resolution for retail and office where they too could, if they were chose to, uh, set may have sales and service out there on the sidewalk. Our current city code allows for uh merchandise to be displayed on the first three feet from this building on the sidewalk already. That's permanent. They can actually sell merchandise and display merchandise already. So this would expand it to the entire sidewalk area right away, uh, walking area, and again, move this pedestrian walkway to the first five feet of the parking bay area. The third area is personal services, including hair salons, barbers, et cetera. And that, of course, group at this time is not allow, will be soon, allow June fifteenth to actually provide such service. And if they wanted to, and I know some hair salons are offering it already, uh, you can have your uh service performed outside, in which case, again, on the sidewalk area, as well as if an office person wanted to set an office desk outside, they could do that. So if someone to cha accommodate their customers would prefer not to go inside a building. So we're giving those options, and the three different resolutions would address those particulars um because of the unique nature of all. And plus, we also want to promote to each of those types of businesses that they may apply for um expanding their office, their business area to the uh sidewalk area.
Can we do this in one fell swoop or do we have to do?
Yes, just approve all three resolutions. The motion is to approve the three resolutions, yes.
I'll take a motion.
Port.
Who made it?
Made it.
Thank you.
Nobody's made a motion yet.
Oh, I thought it's support.
I thought Ken did.
Okay.
Oh, I got it. Okay. That's why I missed it.
I'm sorry, who did the motion?
You did, I guess.
I did. I did. I did. I uh had a motion to approve the village manager's recommendation for the three COVID-nineteen resolutions that are supported by Councilmember Narsh and Mr. Ramville. What would you like to say, sir?
Uh, have we done a survey of all the merchants downtown or all the merchants in favor of uh? Uh, and I'm sure not all restaurants will be probably using sidewalks, but um, is this gonna limit parking for uh other retail stores downtown? Uh, is everybody in favor?
Well, we haven't heard from all of the businesses, but it's been made known and we've been contacting all of them and asking them for input. I don't have a summary of all the comments, but most of them are saying anything to get customers downtown. Yes, parking wouldn't be an issue, but uh we don't anticipate everyone wanting to expand, but we're not sure what will happen. But we could manage that as we go along.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And uh, you can only expand in front of your uh business?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Well.
John, there hasn't been a survey done of the businesses, just some communication, but the resolutions indicate. But the resolutions indicate that they can expand fifty percent into the neighboring area with permission.
With permission, okay.
Right, right. And they can.
Permission.
They could look at public parking lots or other public property also, not just sidewalks.
Ms. Rudd.
Yeah, a couple of questions. This, um, goes, this would take effect until October thirty first? Is that what you said?
I believe some of these I put, the, the liquor license one is October thirty first for that particular license.
What are the other ones?
But I put December thirty one on it.
Okay.
Should they want to continue depending on the weather, depending on the weather.
Um, yeah, it sounds like that for the restaurants, the outdoors, this is outdoor service area for the state must be, be no more than twenty five feet from the premises. So that way, so they can't, there's pretty limited is where they could, um, I'm curious as for businesses that are not opting to participate and may not have adjacent businesses that ask permission to go over. Will we have kind of like a hodgepodge thing where like some parking spaces are open? Or is it going to be just, we're going to cart lunch, like take them all off? Are the handicap spaces, do we know how many spaces are taken up here?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we don't know.
Go as we, see how the response is. I do know that at this time, I believe there's five restaurants now have turned in applications to expand in sidewalk.
So there would be um, pieces of property that, uh, parking is still available in the front of it, like alongside the Mason Lodge possibly.
Okay, so they will kind of like skip.
So there'll be spots, right? And the only thing I thought about, Mr. Young, is on the resolution twenty 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 three, which addresses the outdoor dining establishments, is they're the ones that would be serving alcohol, correct?
Yes.
Is that we should probably have in that resolution, the MLCC, uh, uh, standards or requirements just listed within the requirements of the MLCC and proper, um, permitting. Because they're a part of that entity as well. Mr. Narsch?
Which, which one was that, Ken? That?
The resolution.
Which resolution?
Oh, twenty three, there's three of them, all twenty three, twenty four and twenty five. Twenty three is outdoor dining, twenty four is the, uh, retail office use and twenty five is the services.
Okay, the, uh, the application permit for the twenty twenty limited permanent outdoor service, uh, permission application, uh, does in section or part four and part five, I believe, um, defines all of those. So it's in the application and they have to meet that to get it. Are you saying you just kind of want it in the resolution in addition to the requirements of the MLCC?
Correct.
Oh.
That's all. I think it's appropriate to have it mentioned in there.
Okay, we could, we could add it on page seventy seven. Where the temporary COVID standards through October thirty one, twenty twenty, subject to complying with the MLCC regulations. MLCC regulations.
Anyone else? Mr. Randall, sir.
Are they going to need additional assurance, uh, whole harmless agreements for parking or, uh, putting, um, tables out there? Uh, I did see some recommendations from, uh, other people that, uh, thought it might be a little bit dangerous, uh, for people driving down the street and trying to get into other spots that aren't blocked off, uh. Boy. And we need to cover ourselves good.
They, they will have to sign a whole harmless agreement for using any village property sidewalk or.
Okay, roll call please, if there's no additional comments.
Matheson?
Yes.
Randville?
Yes.
Yes.
And Porfleet?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Narsch?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, we'll look forward to good news of those five applicants that have applied for the, um, quick outdoor, uh, serving license, coverage license. Hopefully it'll all work out. And that's that. We'll move on. Item number five, introduction and first reading of ordinance six point two three tobacco regulations.
Yes, council before you this evening is introduction of an ordinance that's been prepared by village attorney. The patterns to other committees have done prohibiting tobacco and vaping and, uh, various public properties. Uh, this particular one prohibits, uh, a number of places, as you can see on page one oh three, from work size public places, buses. Uh, persons under eighteen can do no school property. It also, uh, addresses the sale to minors. And on page one oh five, it addresses that there would be no smoking, uh, tobacco, marijuana in any of the village parks or beaches. So this is a first, uh, reading in introduction, there would actually be a public hearing, which would be proposed to be scheduled on Monday, July thirteenth at seven thirty P M. For second reading and consideration of adoption of this ordinance.
All we're looking for is acceptance of the first reading.
A motion of accepting first reading and scheduling a public hearing, uh, for Monday, July thirteenth.
Moved by Councilmember Hobbs, supported by Rudd. Discussion? Roll call.
Narsch?
Yes.
Randville?
Yes.
And Porfleet?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item B on our agenda, financial matters. Certification of delinquent utility accounts to the twenty twenty tax roll, Mr. Young.
Yes, this evening we have before you the unpaid utility bills as of December thirty one that we can now, uh, put on the tax bills that will be coming out in July one. There'll be a lien against the property for these individuals and businesses. There are twenty, I'm sorry, forty, uh, village properties to amount of twenty nine thousand one hundred twenty seven dollars and thirty seven cents. There are sixteen properties in the township totaling seven thousand three hundred and thirty six dollars and twenty seven cents. And, um, this would be posted on the tax bill that individuals could pay prior to June twelfth to not have a go on their taxes. Uh, but this evening, uh, motion would be to certify the list of delinquent accounts, uh, to place them on the July first tax roll. This is.
All moved. I'll make a move, uh, certify, um, and play and authorize the treasurer to place on the July first point point tax bill. And incorporate a copy of the list as part of the minutes.
I'll support Mr. Hammond.
I just had a quick question. I, I, I'm shocked that some of these are relatively small and they reached this point. Have we, have we made an effort to reach these people directly or, or just sent reminders through the mail? I mean, Joe, have we really tried to keep this from happening?
Yes, uh, I personally call some of them to follow up. We make them wear the wrap program.
Yeah.
Um.
So they've had every opportunity. This isn't just, they're living in Florida now and it's a rental or whatever. There's no excuse, right?
Not really, no.
You're comfortable with that? Okay. I'm just shocked that some of the small ones that are reaching, reaching this point.
Right. And keep in mind, this was from December thirty one.
Yeah.
I mean, they have even through June now, they haven't made payments to, to take that amount away.
Okay, it is what it is. Thank you.
Some of them are repeats though, correct, Mr. Young?
Every year we do this, yes, for some of them.
Yeah, it's, it's as if I'm not getting my money till the last minute. Okay, roll call please.
Rudd?
Yes.
Randville?
Yes.
Narsch?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
And Porfleet?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item two invoice register and bill approval. Mr. Young?
Yes, council, before you have, uh, bills on the amount of dated May twenty sixth, amount twenty four thousand four hundred thirty two dollars and sixty four cents. And a June fourth invoice register on the amount of ninety four thousand seven hundred thirty six dollars and fifty eight cents. If you have any questions on any of them.
Mr. Matheson?
Move to approve the bills paid in May twenty six, twenty twenty, in the amount of twenty four thousand four hundred thirty two dollars, sixty four cents. And the June fourth invoice register report in the amount of ninety four thousand seven hundred thirty six dollars and fifteen.
Support.
Discussion? Mr. Young, I have one. There's a item on packet page sixty, which is the watch guard video.
Yes.
Forty eight hundred dollars. I'm just curious. I don't think I've seen that before. What is that? Maybe?
That's a police department item. Harold, did you want to speak to that? That's the video for the new police car.
Yeah, that, um, yeah, councilman, um, Van, uh, Van Porfleet, that watch guard, um, is the, would make us have all our cars have watch guard camera system. It's the in-car camera systems. And that one will go into the new vehicle, the new Explorer that we purchased.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call please.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Narsch?
Yes.
Randville?
Yes.
And Porfleet?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. Item three, salary and wage adjustment for non-union employees, Mr. Young.
Yes, council, before you this evening is a recommendation to award a two percent cost of living increase to the non-union position that's listed in your agenda, including, uh, myself, the manager, which had a review last week, uh, granting a two percent. The clerk, uh, the part-time, non-union, public act, public works position, which is acting right now, and the police chief and lieutenant. In the case of the police chief and lieutenant, I'm also asking that they would have a step increase, uh, in their one-year anniversary, the next February, uh, subject to a satisfactory performance review. These monies are in the approved budget as this time. Again, it's a two percent increase.
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Support.
By Mr. Matheson, motion by Mr. Hammond. Discussion. Roll call please.
Randville?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
And Porfleet?
Yes.
Narsch?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Matheson?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to council comments. Mr. Matheson, sir.
Uh, I've got nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Hobbs?
Well, I'm just, I'm just kind of leery about, uh, the fireworks, but you know, it's at your own risk now. And so, uh, that's why I went with it, you know, like Ray said, you, you don't have to go if you're worried about coming down with COVID or, or getting sick. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Narsch?
Uh, just that, uh, welcome back to our businesses and our bars and our restaurants. Pretty soon it'll be barbers and I don't have to use dog grooming equipment on my, what's left of my hair. But, um, just to welcome back our business community and just to reiterate, um, that, uh, please be patient with restaurants and bars. Uh, they are very limited on what they can do. Uh, I was up north in a region over the weekend past that, uh, that had been lifted. And, uh, we stopped into a restaurant to have breakfast. And I mean, I just, I witnessed some incredibly painful things watching how the waitresses were treated. Um, and it was difficult to watch. In fact, uh, I ended up tipping a couple of people that weren't our waiters, but I just, I felt so bad for the abuse they took. Um, there's some really good tips that our friends at Fork and Pine have put out on social media on how to help assist as a customer. Uh, with our restaurants and business, I would encourage you to take a look at it. Um, Fork and Pine, he has it up on their social media site. Uh, it's just tips to not run the rate, uh, waiters and waiters ragged, um, because they're going to be, uh, under a lot of stress. It's difficult to breathe through the mask. Um, it's very stressful for them and I witnessed that firsthand. So welcome back to the businesses. Please be patient. And, uh, let's enjoy seeing each other in three dimensional form over a meal.
Mr. Rudd?
Yeah, I think just to go along with that, um, remember too, especially if they move to outdoor dining, they're going to be putting a lot of steps. Uh, you know, if they're wearing pedometers, they're, you know, going to be going through the roof. So have some patience as they run far distances to get your food, to take your order, all that kind of stuff. They're, they're probably tired, they'll probably be tired too. So, um, yeah. Looking forward to seeing our businesses opening back up soon. So that's all I have.
Great. Mr. Hammond?
Uh, well, we had some protests in the peripheral, the perimeter of the village the other night and, uh, I was out on my bicycle and I talked to some of our local police and I think they did a real nice job and, uh, um, I, I don't know if we're going to see any more of that or not, but I just, I know we, we have voluntarily funded our own police department instead of relying on the county. We made a big step as a community in doing that. Um, it was important to my constituents when I was running for this office. It was the number one issue they wanted to talk about. So, um, in light of that and everything that's going on politically with the police department, we're blessed to have a good police department that has a special relationship with our citizens. We want to keep that. Um, and I, I know, um, Chief Rossman doesn't need to be reminded of that, but I think there's going to be opportunities to interact with the public that maybe we didn't have before. And I, I want it to go well. Um, I want to maintain the relationship we have here. I want to be outside of all the, all the brouhaha around this stuff right now and, um, you know, we're, we're fortunate to have the people we have looking after the village and we appreciate that. And I think the council needs to tell our force occasionally, which we do, in light of these special circumstances, we've got their back and, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randville.
Good job, Ray. Uh, yes, uh, I, uh, I, uh, heard the peaceful march coming and I decided to walk down the corner and saw, ran into Ray and, uh, about time I got a couple of blocks down, they turned around, went back and it was great. It's, uh, very peaceful. Uh, thank goodness. Um, lot of troubled times. The waitresses and the businesses that are opening up are going to be half operation. The waitresses are going to be making half of their pay, doing double the work. So, yeah, just, uh, remember them in your tip, uh, they're still not going to be back up to full snuff for months. So they're working for low pay too. So, uh, that's all I have.
I, uh, I have a couple of items. I, uh, as well wanted to thank our Lake Orion Police Department. Um, chief did a great job. The, uh, officers did a great job. Um, that could have gone south. That could have been a bad situation without it being managed properly by our Lake Orion Police Department and the assistance that we received from Hope County Sheriff. Uh, we stayed in constant contact with each other and it worked out really well and I thank you very much. Job well done. I want to mention that the Village of Lake Orion offices are open again. People can come into the front door. Same way with the DDA offices. They're open again as well. You can go down and talk to the director in person if need be. I wanted to mention that I really enjoyed seeing some of the first outdoor seating by sea jades. They had tables out in umbrellas today and I, I'm actually kind of excited. I'm thinking, uh, you know, this is going to be a, a nice little change for a while and we're probably going to find some real diamonds in there of ways we can do some things better and, and maybe even change our community into a more walkable community and, and, uh, a number of other good things can come out of it. I did want to mention that I had talked with manager Young that I'd like to stay virtual with these meetings throughout the month of June. And then look at coming back into council chambers in July. So if anybody's got opinions about that, please share with us, but we'll look to resume. I've enjoyed these virtual meetings. Um, so thank you very much for that as well. Manager Young, your comments, sir?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, one, I did want to thank the Lake Orion Sunrise Rotary Club for their donation of some sanitizing equipment to the police department. Uh, they also donated to the sheriff and the fire department in Oxford as well. So I want to thank uh the Sunrise Club for that and just want to update that the water main project on Heights Road is moving along. They're on to second to last phase on the winter subdivision down there. Uh, so that's moving along. Uh, likewise, the M dot project is moving along. We've had a couple glitches along the way. Uh, but they want to work closely with us, so we're, we're pleased about that. Um, so we're seeing that progress and move on. The last thing I wanted to mention was that uh we do have employment opportunity in our public works department for seasonal uh labor position. It's forty hours a week. It pays fifteen dollars an hour, depending on your skills. So if you know of anybody interested in um working outside and enjoying the great outdoors, helping us in our community, we're looking forward to getting someone on board through that. And Greens Park is open. I mentioned to Greens Park is open with our park attendants and uh it seems to be going fine and we're very happy about that. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Randall, sir?
Yeah, uh, I thought it was going to be on the agenda tonight because we've been talking about it. We postponed it at the last council meeting about the paddle boarding. Uh, it had come up that he was going to pull out, but now I hear he wants back. Uh, I've heard a lot of problems that they, a little bit of problems they had with him last year and uh I just want to know what status is.
Ms. Rudd, as a liaison on that board, would you like to give us an update?
Yeah, I think uh Mr. Young was going to say something about that, but we are, you know, he, he has talked about it. And so I've talked to Mr. Young too about the concerns that um, the Parks and Recreation Committee has had in the past and ways we can kind of put parameters on there. Um, because um, I mean, Mr. Mr. Young might be able to speak a little bit to it, but you know, he, we did agree to a two-year contract with him, subject to, you know, we, we could terminate it. Um, we haven't. So um, we still have that contract with him. And so talking about different regulations to, or different parameters to make sure that he follows our ordinances, like no dogs in the park, no alcohol in the park. Um, making sure he's out by the time our park attendant leaves. So there's accountability there. So ways that we can have a successful partnership with him. Um, and that, um, so yeah, we're, you know, I've talked to Mr. Young about that and um, how we can move forward in a way that we can still offer a service to the community, so offer an amenity to the community, but in a way that is good for everyone, um, and that has accountability.
Mr. Young?
So is this going to come back before the council, before you give them approval or not?
N- n- not necessarily, because we do have a contract with him. And I can, I will bring it back once we reach an agreement. I've set some conditions for him to consider as uh Commissioner, Councilmember Rudd pointed out. Uh, also I had uh some invitations on any signings that would need to be approved by the manager. He did mention whether or not, see, he also rents and will bring kayaks to you, which he can technically do now. Uh, if he rents them and people, they could drop them off at Greens Park, but he's not renting them at the park. Uh, so he, he does have had service all along, so he did ask about that, but I'm waiting to get confirmation back and then I'll uh run it by the Parks and Rec Board and then the council members as well. As uh, see if we can work something out with this individual.
Yeah, as long as he comes to understanding on those uh issues they had last year with him.
Yes.
Is that it? Does he need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
Move.
Port.
All those in favor, please indicate with aye.
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 Close. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too.